Hear it in the mics and then they can't hear. That's why when we're in a meeting, it's quiet because we have that off.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining Board of Selectmen with the Historical Commission and Mr. Height on Concerns of the Historical Signage at the Udoa Tower Presentation. On July 24th, we had Mr. Height present his concerns with the signage. So, in fairness, we're gonna have the, before the crosstalk starts, we're gonna have the Historical Commission speak on the rebuttal of what Mr. Height presented on June 24th, and then after that, we'll allow each group of people to question each other and hopefully have some sort of resolve to this issue. So if the Historical Commission would like to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Before we go any further, the Cable Committee, and Margaret already knows, would just like to remind us all to, if we're gonna sit back, pull the mic up, or lean into the mic, because on television, it's hard to hear certain few of us. Go ahead, Margaret.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity. I want to acknowledge the presence of two of our members. We're three board member right now. We have one inactive member. Mary Garvin is absent because she works at the library on Monday. And with me are two new members, Emo Berthalet and Lee Clement, who are serving their first term as Historical Commission members. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with the Board, because I think there are clarifications that have to be made. First of all, as we always do at the start of anything with the Historical Commission, is to remind you of our mission statement. And we have stayed very, very closely to this since we were organized. And the Historical Commission is the agency responsible for identifying and recording the historical assets of the community, and for developing and implementing a program of preservation. And then, when we had the landscape plan done for the Longfellow School property, we added that, a mission statement, just for the center grounds. The Town of Millville's goals and objectives for the treatment of the Longfellow municipal center grounds are to preserve the historic character of the site while accommodating a diverse range of municipal needs. And anybody who knows what has happened here on the site has seen that the town has really gone along with that mission statement. I want to thank you for the opportunity and clarify any information we have provided for the Udoa Tower and the other historic sites and the Central Street Landscape Plan. It's important for people to understand that the preservation celebration was really the culmination of over eight years, eight years of work by the Board of Selectmen first, and then in 2007, they invited us in to work on the historical aspects of it. And they asked us to work with a landscape design company in identifying the historic sites from Main Street to Bow and Ironstone. That was the perimeters of what we were to do. And during the next five years, we spent our time with various professionals in presenting our plans to the Selectmen. And you know how often that went. The first plan was rejected. Number one, it did not include the Udoa Tower. But, and then everything came out perfectly, and we had what we needed. And by 2012, everything was in place, and that's when the preservation celebration was planned. Four of the members who planned that, no, three of the members who planned that are no longer members of the Commission. There was a shift after that. And they are the ones who planned the program in its entirety and who worked with the signage, but they resigned last year after four years of service. And they had done remarkable work in their time. And so we have three new members, all of whom were unfamiliar with the plan. But we went over it in the first few meetings, and they approved. And we rescheduled it for May 17th of this year, and that's where the story begins. And I would ask if I could address two parts of comments that Mr. Thomas D. Height has made. And I like to refer to him as Tom, because we've been friends for many years. And one, we had correspondence from Tom on May 22nd. And at our meeting on June 6th, we responded to those, but we did not hear back. We offered him the opportunity to meet with us if he would like to, but we did not hear from him. And then he came to you as Selectmen, and he presented during the Good and Welfare. So we would like to present our remarks concerning that. We have to make a clarification regarding his remarks and the signage for the tower. There's a 23-year span of time between that. He refers to 1989, 1990 time period, when he and a group of other volunteers did work clearing the grounds around the tower. And he also made many generous people who contributed time or money to that volunteer effort. And I want to say that all five members of the Historical Commission contributed to that funding. Our time period, that included the Udoa Tower and the signage, is from 2007 to 2013. So there is that span of 23 years that we're talking about. We have worked with five Chairman and 10 Boards of Selectmen since we were asked by the Selectmen to do the historical part of the plan. John Laura is the only Selectman who is still with us on this plan. In those six years of preparing and approving, and Executive Secretary Helen Coffin has had an important role in advancing that plan. A total of 10 Commission members were involved, and each of them had a part of coming up what would be included in the Central Street Plan. So I need to go back, I think, first to Tom's remarks during the Good and Welfare. He did say, and I have it here someplace, that if you're going to do any reporting in history, you must use the facts. So I have taken the facts that we had in our records, and those are what I will be presenting. In 19, it was the year of 1990 or 91, because that's when this building was in transition. And Tom and I were on that committee that was working with that, and also to come up with a new police station. And I was invited by John McNamara, who might have been the Chairman at the time, and he asked to speak about the tower. He said it had to come down because it was unsafe. And he gave us two weeks, from that meeting night to the next meeting night, to prove that it was safe. Well, we contacted the construction company that was building the Millville Elementary School, and along with a mason who was doing the brickwork. And so they both came down and checked it out. And we were told it would probably stand forever unless the stones at the top began to loosen. They actually said a bulldozer would have a problem taking it down. It took me into the second week to find an architectural historian to come to examine the tower, and that was almost an impossible feat. We couldn't locate one in the area. They would not travel from Boston or beyond. But this woman, Suzanne O. Carlson, and if you want to check her out on the web, she has become a very prominent person, now retired, but she has worked on many, many stone structures. She did come, and she wrote the first actual description of the structure that we have ever been able to find. It was a professional assessment of the Udoa Tower, and it contained this one sentence. "It's a nine feet, it's nine feet, four inches in diameter. It's approximately 30 feet high, with walls at the base 20 inches thick." And that's why we were told it would take a bulldozer, a big bulldozer, to take that tower down. And I was on the committee then, as I said, with Mary Lou Anderson, and Tom was on that committee. I researched the title on that property, because if you remembered, it was a private piece of property. The building had burned, and I researched it in Worcester and found that it was town-owned. Once the Historical Commission knew that it was town-owned, we became very interested in the site. And it was at that point that we began to do some work on it. And I've taken Tom's comments, and I would like to go. He said, "History reporting is so important, but it must include the facts." Well, Tom said that a clean fill was placed. He planted grass and water, and was applied daily until it grew. Well, I'm gonna take exception to some of that, because I had a rake in my hands each of those days, and I raked with Tom. Maybe not as much as he did, but as much as I could do. We raked that loom from the back end of that site to the front. And I came here every day. There was one outlet for water, it was right over there. And I lugged a hose to that site in the morning and in the late evening, and I watered that site, the rear end in the morning and the front end. Occasionally, a good Samaritan goer would buy, would come up and offer to help. Tom probably did the same, but we were never there at the same time. And then he said that we, Mary Lou and I planted some selected shrubs on Central Street. And the fact is that I bought all those shrubs. I bought nine shrubs for the teachers who had taught me, and 17 for the years I taught here. So I bought a total of 26. Some of them were thrown out on the street one day, and the culprit came to my house about an hour later to apologize and tell me he was putting them back. He planted two large yellow maple trees at the front steps. And I want to say that when the highway bridge work was being done, I met with the engineers and asked what we could do to save those maple trees. And he told me the only trees that they could save, or they would pay for, had to be six inches in diameter. And those maple trees fell short of that. And then he planted trees in front of the town offices, and only four survived. And I want to tell you, and Helen would understand, because she gave us permission recently, a son of one of our Historical Commission members, young Dan Berthalet, professionally trimmed, he's a professional arborist, and he came and he trimmed those trees. So we have stayed with that project since its beginning. He said that Joe Becker did some limited pointing to the Udoa Tower to prevent further deterioration and to hold it together until preservation of larger portions could be done. The fact is that when we had the first professional assessment done by Northeast Engineering, they felt that that could endanger the existing mortar, and they recommended that it be removed. And when they presented us with their assessment and their recommendation for what should be done, they allowed $1,500 to remove the gray mortar that had been put there. And Tom has said that up until the last publication from the Valley, he's listed as Chairman of the Udoa Tower, but I'm not aware of that. I do know that in 1992, in the annual Town Report, the Historical Commission reported as part of its report, "In keeping with the Commission's goal to initiate and encourage development and implementation of preservation of town, we acknowledge those groups which have taken positive action in protecting historic resources." We cite the Udoa Tower, chaired by Margaret M. Carroll and Thomas D. Height, and those residents who have supported the effort to preserve and restore the unusual stone structure. And that was done by the existing members of the Historical Commission, they were our charter members, Laurie Berthalet, John Dean, Paul Donley, Mary Garvin, and myself. So that, actually, the Historical Commission did thank those people. We didn't have their names, but we did thank them. And then, I think this is important. Vern Rainville offered to build the same roof that is now on the tower at no cost to the town. Margaret Carroll was not in favor of it, and it was never built. Well, the fact is, I don't remember that. But I do know, I do know that Vern did very good work here in this building. I don't remember his association with the tower at all. But I do know this, that when we started to work on that tower, the first thing we had to do was see the building inspector, because it's a structure. So maybe way back then, I had in my mind that that's what we had to do. I don't know. Before we could do anything in that tower, we had to have a professional architect's assessment on what was going to be done. And strangely enough, we had it done, and that became the basis of all of our future work on the tower. However, by the time Jose began to work on it, that assessment had run out, and we had to have a second one done. So that's how important it is to have the building inspector's approval. And then Tom said that he, other folks need to be recognized. And I don't know who we refer to as the people who were recognized. As far as the signage goes, there were no recognitions, there was no recognition. So that is, those are our responses to Tom. We offer them in a friendly way, but it's important to offer them, because there have been people working with us through that time. And we have recognized them through our own records. Now, if I may, I need to go to the correspondence we had from Tom. And it concerned, it was a two-page email that came through, and it contained 10 statements. And I have to say honestly, I personally, I was saddened when I read these. He said, "Why did we invite Reverend Stubbs and wife from St. John's Episcopal Church?" And then, "And our comments about the history of New Hope Baptist Church and its origins as Lutheran to Methodist to Baptist, and then across town to St. Augustine's and its history, and exclude St. John's?" There's a simple answer to that. And, "Why is the Udoa Tower plaque half an arrow to the Chestnut Hill Meeting House and St. Augustine's, and there is no St. John's and no New Hope?" Well, the answer to the first one is, we mention New Hope Baptist Church and St. Augustine's, because those are the perimeters. You start at New Hope Baptist. The walking tour will start or end at New Hope Baptist Church, and it will end or begin at St. Augustine's. That is a distance of a half a mile. We have very carefully worked on this plan. And there are seating. If you're taking that tour, there are seating at the park, at DCR. Hopefully, if we have enough men left in the Historical Commission, there will be a simple seating arrangement, and not here. If people are going on a walking tour and they want a place to rest, there must be one. On Main Street, it goes from the cemetery down to the Town Hall Park. There, you can rest at the Town Hall Park, or you can rest at Veterans Memorial. So the reason why St. John's was not mentioned, because it came within the perimeters. And the reason why there was an arrow pointing to Chestnut Hill Meeting House and St. Augustine's is because that map had sites on the north side of town. And there were eight sites on the south side of town, and St. John's and New Hope Baptist Church are there. And Mr. Chairman, as Chairman of the Board, you received a letter from the Historical Commission. We put together a very explanatory letter, a lengthy letter, explaining why each site was being chosen. And we did that, we sent that letter to Reverend Stubbs at St. John's, and we included a copy to Mr. Height. So that's why, and the sites were chosen very carefully. There were two houses. One is the 1750 house, because it's the oldest house on the walking tour. And the 1812 house here is because 1812 was a very important part in the industrial history of the whole country, the War of 1812. So those, each of those sites were very, very carefully chosen. And then Tom was offended because he had not been invited to speak. And he said, actually, he said, "I turned him away when he spoke to me." Well, I greeted as many people as I could when they got to the grounds. And when I spoke to Tom, he said, "I hope you're gonna let me speak on the program." And I was taken back. I said, "Tom, this was about 10 minutes before the program." I said, "Tom, the program was put in place a year ago, and the people involved, the three people involved are those who funded all of the landscaping." We did not, we had Mr. Repose representing the town, and we had three people who had presented the landscape. And the last person is the one who is now in charge of the activities in the corridor, and she was there to be introduced. So if anybody wishes to become involved in corridor activities, they will know who she is. So those are the things that I think we really need to understand, that we very carefully planned. We did not plan to omit anyone. We did not plan to offend anyone, and apparently, we did. And I don't know what else I can say, except that we, the Historical Commission, has every intention of contacting Reverend John Derek Stubbs at St. John's, because we have had a very, very pleasant, a very friendly association with St. John's ever since the Historical Commission was in. We've had events there, we've done as much as we could. So I think with that, and needless to say, oh, then, there is one more. I have to do this one. Tom, he did say, he referred to the so-called historic districts. We have two historic districts in this town, with a recommended two more. One would be the Bannigan City section, and one would be the Chestnut Hill section. They are on our agenda in the future. We carefully planned that we would do this, starting in 1993. Everything has to be funded. And we did exactly what the Historical Commission in Boston recommended. We had a survey made of all the historical cultural resources in this town. And they were amazed at the number of existing structures and sites that we had. Then we went out and we wrote a grant, and we received money to have the first national district. A professional who came in recommended that we do the Central Street, because that contained most of the early milling. We did that. And in the Central Street District, I'm not gonna, well, there were 94 historic buildings. There were 12 historic sites, and there were three historical structures in that short distance of Central Street. The boundaries were drawn to encompass the intact significant resources along Central Street that are associated with the town's industrial and social history. That is what we took and put into the signage. You just don't say, "We had mills and stopped there." You go now, how the town developed around those mills, how housing came in, how social, all of that. And then, that was in 2002 and 2003. 2004, that same team came back. We had obtained funding from Mass Historical, and they completed the application for the Main Street. There were 127 buildings, 22 sites, and two structures. All of these became part of the Second National District in Millville. And the selection for that is a little wordy, but it does say that it contributes to an understanding of the lifestyle and living styles of the factory workers over nearly a century. The Main Street District is a potent reminder of the town's origins. So it is not, the historic districts in our town are highly significant. And I was offended when Tom said those so-called districts. That was the only personal reaction I had. And so I have all kinds of other materials here. I think I've taken enough time. But I do want to say that for the, we started this year's program, the long-range plan for this year's programs to write a second walking tour of Millville. The second long-range plan is to study the history of the Chestnut Hill area. And the third short-term plan is to complete the honorables for our other veterans. We don't just randomly sit at our meetings and say, "What shall we talk about tonight?" They're very, very carefully planned. And we were part of this walking, we're coming down to the end of, I'd like you to have one, Helen. Thank you. And if you would pass that. Now, this is what is before us. We, now, in the letter, in the letter to each of those, I have to find that one letter. In that letter, it carefully explained that there would be, the first paragraph of our letter to those people who are on the walking tour, "Our next goal is to develop and print a second walking tour of Millville for the town's historic sites." Now, I'm just gonna close with one thing. We have the Udoa Tower. We have broken the Udoa Tower's story down into five different little chapters. You could never tell the story of the tower on a sign, and you will never tell the story of the Udoa Tower on a walking tour. If you look at that, there are capsulated discussions or interpretations. The ultimate goal is to have an interpretive talk written for each site. And then, the very ultimate of all, that would be that we would have volunteers in this town who would become the interpreters, who are given day, could go out and be at these different sites as I guess come along, and they tell the story of each of those sites. And that's only the beginning of what we could do with our historical background in this little village of Millville, which is about to celebrate its 100th anniversary in three years. So if you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer them.
I have a few extra minutes, because I cannot speak this long, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
You're welcome, Tom.
I just want to clear the air a little bit, as to my intentions. Thank you, guys, for taking your time, including Helen. Of course, I think you get me apart. And Margaret. Thank you. And the rest of you guys, thank you. On May 22nd, I sent a personal email to Margaret Carroll. Now, I call Margaret Margaret, because we've known one another for 37 years. We have a lot of personal history. My great passion for the town and for getting things done probably was instilled by you. And, you know, we need to remember that. On June 2nd, I got a letter from Margaret realizing that she is now addressing me as Mr. Height from the Town of Millville Historic Commission. And I thought, "Holy cow, I must be gonna get cited for something. I'm important." But I was a little bit taken back. I thought, "Mr. Height." So that happened, and I didn't respond, because if you read my correspondence and Margaret's answer, she really doesn't answer the question that I ask. And then, we end up here tonight. Now, Margaret, I'm gonna say this, because the town is listening. Everybody knows that you're the queen of Millville. Everybody knows that Tom Height has you on a throne, ascending you into heaven. When I hear hymns like "Mother dear, oh pray for me," "How great thou art," and all those, I always think of people in Millville, especially you.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes. Because you are the queen of Millville. Now, if you and I could get something like this started in the nation's capital, maybe we could change government. Transparency is important. Friendship is important. So getting to the point, I don't want to go on to this. My only intention, I love all the history. I thought the Preservation Day was beautiful. I thought you did very well, minus my part. I thought you did very well, minus my part, but that's okay. And that was all good, and very positive, and good for the town. Because this town was built with hard work and comradeship. We, we don't bite in Millville, very rarely. That being said, I just want to go back to the point is, and you've got some of this work in front of you, but I'll give you the latest.
I remember, yeah.
It's important to know where we start. Because when you begin, at some point in time, and it happens to be 23 years later, we have the final glorious ending. It's a little different. I've got the rest on.
Thank you.
And these names have to be spell-checked because I'm not sure of how to all them. So I'm just sharing this with you people. But what I want to do is talk about the Udo Tower and nothing else. And all these people that have spent their hard-earned money, they're loving support and their stewardship of the village treasures to be recognized. And I think simply put, if we could get, and this stuff will all fit on an eight and a half by 11, if we could get a, a new plaque put somewhere near the tower, just honoring this. It doesn't have to be my words at the top. It can be changed around. But it encompasses everybody that was involved at the time. And we won't go into who was doing what. And by the way, I have a wonderful picture of you with a rake, one hot August day. And I said to you, go home. I'm younger than you are. I can do this. This is man's work. I remember that. I know you do. And we have other films coming, which I'll have to get Mr. Levante to put onto disc so we can show them to the town of all the history and all the interviewing and all the muscle work that was done. But my suggestion is that we, we go in peace tonight. And the Historic Commission, under the direction of whoever, considers getting another plaque made in honor of these people. I have not missed anybody.
Yes, you have.
Who?
Unfortunately, you have.
Who?
It's somebody I've, I'm not going to discuss.
No, see, there's always a catch. These are people from my journal, cash and checks.
Well, you'll have to talk to the person involved.
To Tom Height. And I kept very good records of them. And I have not put in the amounts down purposely. I seeded the thing. I think I did mention that. They're all on there. And we had follow-up times too for shrubbery and other plantings. So, in any event, the ones that were, in fact, I can still Marcy Marty Colet, we called her Marty Solomon, Margaret Solomon, God rest her soul. She's actually standing on her front porch on Lincoln Street every day when I wave and I went on envelope. When are you going to stop and pick up this check? She was the first one to donate. That's community spirit. And then Paul did that wonderful flyer that you have a copy of. And this is what I used. And I left notes on this to people that weren't home. Would you support us? You know, some of them did, and some of them didn't. So let's think positively and be proactive and not reactive, and get these people onto some kind of plaque. If you don't want to put it on the tower or in front of the tower, put it in one of these rooms. But they need to be recognized. Because the bottom line is, without that effort, the selectmen on more than one occasion, including when I was the selectman, would have taken that tower down. Millville would endeavor had it. The, we did not have money in the town, and we were not going to burden the taxpayers. So it was all donations, and we have got to thank these people for what they did for their community. Enough said.
Well, I will say that I know of a person who has already called me, and I'm not going to get into it. I simply, to put that person in touch with you.
Yeah, please do.
There is a name missing, and that's the danger you have when you miss. There have been many, many, many wonderful things done in this town, and they were not publicly recognized. We did recognize all of them, not by name, in the Historical Commission. Jose Lemos' name should, he does not want a plaque. Nothing should go on that tower. Because then it will be changed. It would be called substantially changed. There was never a plaque, only that Udo Tower. There should be something there for that man who did it, and who actually did the work. There should be something in the police station for John Laura. You said yourself.
I think there is.
Well, I haven't seen.
Well, we have this back here.
And that, that, there's an error in this.
Oh, I probably shouldn't have been on there twice. That's probably the error.
No, it is not.
I checked to see if I was scratched out one day. I was so paranoid.
Who would scratch?
Oh, God only knows. Things happen in this town. Anyway, if I miss somebody, please have them contact me. I will go through my bank records because I have all this stuff.
And because, but that's what I'm saying. I think the time to have thanked, they're all good friends, all good friends of mine. I think that should have been done 23 years ago when this action was being done. It really should. There have been other people who have done other wonderful, wonderful things. And for the Historical Commission alone, I'm sure there must be other things that Helen could mention, people have done here at the hall or in the, but we're talking something that took place 23 years ago.
Who was the chairman of the committee at that time? The Udo Tower, or the, when you honored these people? I mean, who, you're saying 23 years ago?
I was chairman of the Historical Commission.
So why didn't the stuff get put on?
I was, I was.
We had it? We had it filed?
It was not for the Histor, that was not the work of the Histor. That was a volunteer group of people.
Yeah, but you're saying this stuff should have been included in that, at that time?
No, you should have taken care of it. You're asking it to be done now. Why wasn't it done then if you were the chairman?
Well, I was the chairman of the building committee who was doing all that. Mary Lou Anderson.
The building committee had nothing to do.
All right, anyway, let's not.
No, excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry. I have the record of the building committee. It's reported in the town report. The building committee had nothing to do with the Udo Tower. Absolutely nothing. There were members of that committee who worked, Mary Lou Anderson and I, for one.
Yes.
You see, here we are, and we are arguing. And that's what I'm saying. Danger of doing things 23 years later is a, is a, is a vast.
So it's better to ignore, is what you're saying, than to correct.
No, I think it's, I think it should have been.
I think we should be transparent and correct it now, and any other faults that we've made. You know, Freud says that to love, one must be humble. So I'm going to take the humble mode because I do love you.
Tom, our friendship has been long, and I hope it will last. It has absolutely nothing to do with the before us. You asked about why we, why, you sent that letter, you sent the email to me. That was not my project. I worked on that project as chairman of the Historical Commission. I read the second one, and I said, this is something that the commission, I sent you an email and said this is being forwarded to the, I didn't even send an email. I printed it and delivered it to the members.
You got the letter.
And, and I.
Thomas D. Height.
Yes, because that, to me, is the formal way. I wrote, I wrote.
She, she addresses me rolling on the side. On the side, no good. Here, it's Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I do. I mean, I, that's, that's.
So don't take that person.
And I sent, we, I sent, I delivered, hand-delivered, his letter to the members because I would not put that out on an email. And I said, we would, this would be on the agenda, and we discussed it at our June meeting. And we composed a letter at the June meeting, and we sent it to Mr. Thomas D. Height at, at his address. I can't imagine sending a letter out to Tom Height.
Well, I mean, the, your, the personal email to you was your entree to say, oh, okay, let's talk about this. But no, you sent it to the board.
Your entree to me, so you didn't just call, what can I talk about? So here we go.
So, Tom, I mean, it probably isn't, but is there any money left in that?
No, no, we spent $6,100 and some change.
Right to pay. All right, well, I'm just, because with, with our great resources in town, we can't afford a plaque.
Well, there's money left from the fund for the other work that's done and the plaques. I do think that should be taken out of there and done. And if that's not possible, let me know, and I will personally take up a collection to pay for it. And I want to do it.
But I would like it coordinated with, you know, you and come to some agreement with Historical. To, to make it all tie into what's, what's already done.
My point is, I'd be happy, we'd be happy if this plea to pick up, but we, Historical Commission had nothing to do. We commended him, he was, we commended, I was chair, and we were co-chairs. That was never picked up. When that came out in the annual report, it never, you never said, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, there's something wrong here. We listed a whole group of people. This is, this is our third report. We were just getting started. And there was great things. I can give you a copy of that whole report. We were acknowledging all of the people, all of the groups that had done anything to move the town's history forward. That was it. We acknowledged the work of that, the people work, and I happen to be one of them.
And that's wonderful, but I still think in the, for the Udo Tower project, Udo Tower specific, that the people that really saved the tower and put their money into it and backbreaking work into it, yourself included, should have been listed on that.
Okay, let's take a middle year.
All right.
Let's, let's take 2003.
Okay.
How many people serving on the Historical Commission would even know that work had taken place? That work took place, it would end it.
They wouldn't, but I'm 73, and I think you're a little bit older than that.
I'm certainly that.
With both our minds, we need to put all this stuff out before we go to our great reward so that it isn't missed, you know? And as I said, you have given me this great passion for town politics and towny stuff, and here I am. So I'm fighting now to correct it.
It, I mean, to, in defense for the Historical Commission, all their meetings are public, posted, and so it's shame on myself, for one, for not going to their meetings. And unfortunately, we, we all can't go to all meetings. But if there is a meeting with any committee or, or department that you wish to get your voice heard, if you can't go, well, by all means, at least get a letter to the committee.
We invited him to our June 6th meeting. We invited him for the meeting, and he didn't come.
You said you'd be in touch with the date, but the next thing I heard then was from, I believe, oh, the board the night we spoke.
Well, all I can say is, the minutes of the Historical Commission have been on file ever since they were required. And we have an annual report that goes out every single year. And, and anything that was discussed about the Udo Tower would be in our minutes or in the town report. And beyond that, reporting to the public, there's nothing else we can do. As you said, our meetings are open to the public. Our agenda is posted, and, and we're very carefully monitored because, as I said, we set our goals at the beginning of the year. And beyond that, if you.
Well, may I respectfully request that you take this information that we do have and consider how it would work out on a plaque and get a price on that. And then, if we don't have the money left, I'll do a fundraiser.
Now, you referred to some fund. Were you, you thought there was some fund?
I think there's over $5,000 left in that grant money that was gone for the planting and the stuff that went on around here recently.
I'm not aware of that.
I believe so.
I'm not aware of how much is left.
Fifty-five thousand.
I'm not even sure I have to get the file.
I have, we have nothing to do with that.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, there is money there, you know, if we wanted to spend.
Well, I, that's all I can say, Mr. Chairman, is that we will put this on the agenda. Now, we do not meet in August, Ju, Ju, July and August.
Okay.
For apparent reasons, vacations and stuff like. We will put this on the meeting. If you wish me to call a special meeting in September, I could do. This will be on the agenda for in October. I personally do not feel it's the Historical Commission's decision to make.
Well, then maybe the board of selectmen can make that decision.
I mean, if you ask us to do it, we will. But that links it down, that's going to put that in, that vote in the hands of four people. And two of them know nothing about what happened in, in 1990. I know it's, it's a.
The only thing I know about what happened there in 1990 is I saw it get surrounded with chain-link fence and the windows get boarded up. That's the only history I know of, just by physically seeing it happen.
But you know what, Mr. Chairman, we didn't stop there.
No, I know.
We kept going.
Right.
We, the Historical Commission kept going. We have put a great deal of energy, a great deal of research, and I can't tell you how much correspondence. It got to the point where we would send a letter asking for help, and they'd refer them back to me, as chairman of the Historical Commission, for information about the tower. So that we, we did not, we, we picked up where they left off, is what happened.
That, you, you mentioned the police station. That they, we did honor John Laura because I was the chairman of the board at the time, and I gave the speech right out there and the.
I don't think there's anything hanging, though. I don't think there's anything hanging.
I don't know that there is.
There was a clerk.
But we did make a fuss.
Clerk of the works job.
We did make a fuss.
A plaque was there.
Now, some of those people were very shy and didn't want, no, they didn't want.
Well, I mean, you know, you can go there.
Well, can I just?
So Jennifer has been trying to.
I've been playing. I, I don't like naming people. One, it's so long ago that people are forgotten, or efforts of somebody whom they thought they did something, and then they're not acknowledged. So I'm not personally for names on a plaque. And I don't know if we have anything in town besides, like, building committees, you know, who were appointed, like at the school, you know, you have the plaque. And here, they have the, the plaque. So I don't know if we have anything of like, and not to say they shouldn't be acknowledged, but do we set precedent by putting plaques around every time we get a donation of money? I think could take away from the, the building itself. I personally think in the past that we've always left it at the committee's discretion as to how to historically preserve, how to present, what to put up, whether that goes to the Historical Committee, and they vote on it, on how they want to do this. I mean, I don't have a problem with a small plaque telling, you know, the history of the Udo Tower inside saying, you know, and the efforts of X number of people from this time to this time, including boards and residents and sweat and tears, and something of that sort. I personally am not for, for names. But I also think that our Historical Committee, and so you can correct me if I'm wrong. Well, you go if you're kidding, but I'm not wrong. Has this, you usually make a plan of what you want to do within the community.
Yes.
And then you come to the board for presentation and posting. So I think we should follow suit with that and let the Historical Committee, now that we've heard it, and we've been able to, you know, have a nice conversation of ideas. And you can see where the breakdown kind of came in, and you can understand that. But I think we need to give it back to the Historical Commission as a request.
But it needs to be launched at the Historical Commission, Jennifer. It needs to be launched at the Historical.
Well, it does if they're asking for it to be recognized as, you know, the efforts that were put in place for that. Now, whether the Historical Committee wants to put a plaque up somewhere, or they might say it's not in their favor, not, they're not in favor of it, and then it could come to us and we could supersede them if, if so may be, or whatever. But I think everything in this building, Margaret, everything in this room, in this building outside, is set by your, your committee.
It's been because of.
And I was on that committee.
Yes.
And I lifted the first hammer in this building.
The selectmen, the selectmen gave us their charge before, before, well, when the transition was being made from the town hall to here. They asked us, and, and the schools, Mr., John, there was a superintendent. They asked us if we would coordinate the efforts, which we did very aptly. And it worked out well.
And not to say that they shouldn't be recognized.
No, I agree with Jeff.
The manner in which.
I want everybody to be recognized, but I, I feel the same way about putting all the names on a plaque, especially for a reason like Margaret brought up, what if you missed one?
Well, anybody that donated is on that list. So I'm dying to hear from this person that says she, and no one knows about that list, Jeff. That hasn't been out in the public.
I'm glad it hasn't.
So I don't know how they could say they were missed because they don't know them.
You read it, you read the names.
And is the audio that good? No.
You remember, Tom, you read the names?
I did, I read them, yes, I did.
And that's what, that yellow was picked up.
Yes, yes, and.
Well, that's something, if it's decided that the names will go on, they can be a, kind of a.
So, Tom, the list is just monetary donations? Is that what that list is?
Monetary and, and support, yeah, you know, whether it was goodwill.
Because I'm just, I'm just curious how a ledger catches people who donated their time for a day. You, you do, or you do run the risk there, it's just, that's, that's a tough one.
But, you know, we have the Longfellow Municipal School, which obviously was named after.
For the chairman, literature man.
We have the police station over there, and I'm trying to think of who, we did dedicate that.
John K. Maloney. John K. Maloney.
Yeah, John Maloney, yes, because his wife was there, I see it now. We have the John McNamara Gymnasium at the school, we have the Margaret Carroll Library at the school.
Shows when you see one of them.
Auditorium.
Auditorium, and, you know, I think it's, it's a good idea to have people recognized. And it's better to have many ideas than just one person or maybe two people, you know, making the decisions.
Well, I will repeat my feelings on it. I think this should have been done at the time that, since it ended, since their efforts ended, and they very, and they were wonderful, it was wonderful what they did. But that project ended, and that's when the recognition should have been done.
I think I was on the Board of Selectmen and I was probably too busy. Or maybe I was too busy reconstructing this building.
I worked with you on that.
Yeah, you did, but all this floor planning was my idea in blueprints, so. I know about history and I know about donations and I know about labor of love and passions, but I'm at an age now where I think we need to start being realistic with one another and recognize everybody for everything that they are.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to see this, this issue resolved, you know, in some agreement. I, I'm all for the recognition of the effort that went into this twenty-three years ago. You know, I appreciate what Jen offered, and I agree to that to, to an extent that, you know, you might miss someone, but I, I think the recognition of the, and the small plaque near the tower would be appropriate, just to recognize that the citizens of Millville that-
Would you listen by name?
Well, no, after hearing this discussion here in Millville.
You could correct that simply by saying, "Many thanks to the honorable citizens as, as follows for their support. Here are some of the names. That way, if you miss someone, it isn't that, you're not going to miss anybody."
We don't know, because, I mean, I've been on projects like that where it's all volunteer, and you get people that just show up anonymously, they'll put two or three hours in and then disappear, nobody knows where they came from or where they went.
And they brought something down in a truck.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they let, gave you a rape.
They just, you know, who knows? So you don't want to miss those people.
No, but I have those names written down with everybody that donated.
Yeah, right.
I was meticulous about their money because the money wasn't made out to the town of Millville, that would have been another issue or problem to deal with. It was made out to me, they trusted me, we had one and, how, they're listed anyway, but I had one that got so angry because we wouldn't go forward with, with the tower roof that Rainville offered, that they asked me for their money back.
Do you accept the reason why I might have proposed that?
Oh, yes, I understand all of those things. But think back about the building committee with, when we were ready to transition up here. Had we sat there and spun our wheels for two years with a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that we had in the bank, everyone wanted to study, I said, never mind the study, get the police up there, get some room for the assessors, let's get this thing moving, use some of the money. And this was all funded, almost virtually, from the, I don't even know where that money came from, but instead of studying it, we spent the money on the labor, on the work. This, you know, this was all from the school down there. I mean, we worked hard.
We did.
You and I and many others. And we're not talking about this building, but we're talking about recognizing the people on the tower. You know, I don't have any problem if we put that plaque in the building, it doesn't have to be outside, we don't have to have a spotlight on it.
Right.
You know, it can be in here.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is just an idea, I'm not sure if the board would be willing to consider it, or if Mr. Height would be willing to consider it either, but I was thinking, in lieu of a plaque, perhaps asking Mr. Height to write something up that could go in the 2013 Annual Town Report, specifically written up from the volunteer committee that he chaired all those years ago, since, as you just said, it was private donations, the checks were not made payable to the town.
Right.
I, I don't know honestly that it's appropriate to have a plaque in the town building because it wasn't a fundraising-
Yeah, though it should be out there.
-by a board or committee. But I think if the board was willing to accept some, something written up by Mr. Height, it would be his responsibility to be sure he included all those people who donated directly to his volunteer group.
Yeah.
It's just an idea, I'm not sure if it's something you'd even want to consider, but you do have the authority to, you know, allow that go in the report.
Mr. Breathel.
I like the idea of Tom, if we specifically state that these folks donated financially, and then another statement, those who gave their blood, sweat and tears, so that he's covered everybody, but yet he, Tom's kept detailed notes on the financial aspect, but the work ethic and all of that, a broad statement to cover those that really helped out, and maybe putting it in his book.
That's, that's not a bad idea either.
Tom, would letters, like a letter to the individual or their, their families that are still living as a thanks from the town for the early year efforts?
I think I sent them handwritten thank you notes, but a lot of these people are passed away now.
Yeah, I know, I've noticed that.
And I just, I just don't know, I, I just think we're missing the boat, not to include everything. You know, I'm into this thing about all God's children and loving all God's children and taking care of all God's children, so when we start talking about God's children, we don't care if they're black, green, yellow, lame, deaf, dumb, whatever, they're all God's children. All of these are the citizens of Millville that made this town what it is today. And half the people watching this are probably saying, what are those people talking about? Because we have such a new group in town.
Yep.
Tom, I have, I'm going to ask two questions, could I give that copy to the person I heard from, so that person would see?
I have two. I have two.
I, I think you should have them call me because I want to.
Well, I want, I want them to see the list first, if you should.
You don't need the list if they claim they're excluded, right? If they said they were excluded, if I didn't mention them, then have them call me.
They heard you call, they heard that-
And I will, I will write an article in the call begging their humble forgiveness.
They're not looking for that, Tom, if somebody heard you presenting on, on air and they, they called and said, you read the list, they did not hear their name, did I hear their name? I said, I didn't hear the program. And so they, they're going by what they heard. I think it'd be nice if they could see the list to be sure their name wasn't on, that's all.
Well, they need to call me and tell me who they are and we'll-
So, okay, so-
Then I have one other question.
Okay.
Tom, can you tell me, why didn't you have this, this, this has kind of acknowledged at the time?
Because I was not in charge of it at that time and-
You weren't in charge of the project?
Not at that time, no. I was on to the, to the Board of Selectmen and other things, and you and Mary Lou Anderson were running the show, and they didn't get put in, they didn't get put in. I mean, everybody makes mistakes.
Come on, this is, this is going too far.
Margaret, come on now.
So, so, all right, let's, so what you guys are looking for is you want us to decide what, what direction to take?
I, I personally feel it's difficult to ask a four-member board to make such an important decision, especially when they were not involved with the initial project.
Right, and I mean, none of us were, I mean-
Margaret, did you-
Jennifer's parents were involved with it, but-
I watched some of it.
You know.
Did your vote already discuss this and take a vote that you'd rather have our board make the final decision?
No, no, we only discussed-
How would it be if, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, how would it be if, after I find out who this person is that I've forgotten, I'll put together and I will have a plaque made at probably my expense, or maybe I'll get some people to ship in, I will simply come here some night at the Gooden Welfare and present it to the Board of Selectmen. You can hang it in the toilet, you can put it in the back garage, you can put it somewhere, but at least it's done. Hundred years from now, when someone uncovers the dusty fence, you go, oh my God, those are the people that did that tower out there, you know?
They didn't do the tower, Tom, they did the, the grounds around the tower.
And there was a lot of work done to the tower to preserve it.
I think, I think if, if, I personally think it needs to go to the Historical Commission, so I say that, committee, to decide. If it's decided that there is going to be a plaque with names, then we have to encompass all of the people who have done the, the work right up until May seventeen.
Yeah, including this.
Including all the names that went. And, but I feel that that's a Historical Committee agenda item in which they need to vote on.
Yep.
If they don't feel comfortable voting on it, then they can, as our really appointing authority to them, they could turn that decision over to us.
Yep.
That's, that's kind of where I'd like to see it go at this point.
So are you making that motion? Just cor- correct me if I'm right, Margaret, right? Twenty-three years ago, that was the kickoff to the initial preservation, the, the beginning of it?
It was-
I would say, I would say the initial kickoff was, was when, when it burned, and we researched the title and found out that it was town owned. That was the beginning, and now, and then, then Tom and I worked and these other people.
Okay, so that was another step though, towards, towards what has just been done.
That was the second step, that was the second step.
Okay.
This, this eighty-nine date on here that, that was under this picture is probably a good, I think, a thing, didn't the post office burn eighty-eight?
No. Eighty-two, eighty-three?
That far back.
I was walking home from school that day, watched it from, uh, the noise.
Well, I know they, I know Margaret approached me, they go, we have to do something to save the tower, I said, yeah, let's go for it. And this, this was the thing we used to get the attention.
So I know, I know, I make a motion to turn this over to the Historical Committee to put, place on their agenda and then to make a decision accordingly.
Yep, put a plan together, and if, if not, if you don't feel comfortable voting on it, then, then we'll have to vote on it as this board, but if you could put together some plan.
All right.
So that's, that'll be your motion?
I want to say, I do want to say.
Second. Second. Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I, I must add at this point-
You're going to abstain, John, from that vote?
I can't guarantee that we have a complete list of everybody who worked with the tower.
We do. They're all on here.
No, I don't mean that, for the Historical Commission.
Okay.
I think there's a discussion of other people that worked on it too.
Oh, and we're on public television, I know this runs about twelve or fifteen times. I implore you folks out there, Margaret, since I forgot somebody, if you have knowledge that I forgot, you let me know and I'll check my record book and we'll correct that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. So that concludes this meeting with the Historical Commission, and thank you, Mr. Height, and thank you to the Historical Commission for, for this meeting.
Thank you.
You take it from there.
Now, we're going to take a thirty-second break to start our seven o'clock meeting.
Like if they are tired, I'm sorry, but it's almost work.
No, that's okay, that's what we're here for. We're just going to switch folders and then we'll start the next meeting.
That's all we have.
Yeah, it's up to them. All right, you guys all ready? Any more, any more goodies, Helen, to pass out?
Nope.
Okay. We ready to go? Okay, good evening, everybody, once again, thank you for joining us for our seven P.M. meeting on July fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
We have just a few announcements tonight, and unfortunately, sad. Just remember Norman Markov, former member of the Council on Aging, and an avid senior center supporter, and he was also a member of the Knights of Columbus here in town. And also passing of Kevin Blanchard, member of the Council on Aging and senior center volunteer. He's the gentleman that volunteered his time to do the work of, of the director, so to speak. So our sympathy is extended to both family and all their friends. So if we could just have a moment of silence for both, both people. Thank you. All right, we have approval of minutes and warrants for June twenty-fourth at seven P.M. and all were in attendance, so do I have a motion?
Make Martin accept the warrant for June twenty-fourth. For approval? I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Give a mic towards you, there's a cable, ask us to-
Can I do have warrants this evening? First is the payroll warrant for checks dated July eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen, in the amount of forty-one thousand, five hundred, four dollars and twenty-four cents. And I have what we hope to be the last FY thirteen vendor warrant, in the amount of thirty-one thousand, one hundred, twenty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. And I have a fiscal year fourteen vendor warrant in the amount of forty-one thousand, five hundred, two dollars and fifty-two cents.
Motion to, it's, I have a motion to accept the warrant, has Ray? Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Reports of town officials, we have on, here for the flag warrant and the Green Energy Committee, and I don't see either person, so.
Must be a lot going on.
Uh, I guess we'll contact them and see if they, um, well, under this, I'd like to say something real quick on behalf of the Electrical Inspector. He's scheduled to be at one of our September meetings, I think it's the first one, that So what he's doing in, in Oxbridge and in Mender, and I guess those two Boards of Selectmen are supporting, is, he's trying to restructure the, the permacies so that the clerk, or whoever it is answering the phones at the town hall, can basically have a spreadsheet when somebody calls in, and that person will know what the permacie is, rather than calling, calling the inspector, because then what happens in this case is Chrissy has to call the inspector a few times- Cause then what happens in this case is Chrissy has to call the inspector, um, a few times a week, you know, here's, I, I've never had to do this type of permit, what, what do we do? So there'd be.
Okay.
And, and he's also finding that certain permits are not covering the expense of the town.
Oh, really? Okay.
Cause we're paying him thirty-five to do an inspection, but certain permits require two inspections. Even a simple little shed, there's normally two inspections, you have the underground and the rough, and then the finish. If it's open walls, you can do the rough hand to finish in the same inspection, but he still has to do the underground. And usually it's twice, so that's seventy dollars and, and I believe our minimum fee is forty. Now, other permits may offset that, so in the end, he, he, he's looking at what his stipend is and what he gets per inspection. He's concerned that, um, the town's taking a loss at the end of the year, cause he, I believe Mendon is, is either breaking even and taking a loss, and so is Oxbridge, um, because of the old structure and, you know, and our rates are a lot low, and I will admit that, pulling permits myself around the corner of, so. Um, and not to, not, and, and you don't wanna gouge the, the residents for higher fees, but we also have to cover our expenses at the same time. And that's all he's, so he's gonna put some sort of spreadsheet with the cost for us to, uh, approve or not approve.
Good.
At that time, so. So I'm glad to see somebody's looking out for.
Chairman, will we see that in advance of his meeting here?
Advance of September?
Yeah.
Yeah, he hopes to have it to us in a mail.
Oh, yeah, I'll ask him if he can get it to me before the meeting.
Yeah. By the last meeting in August, so we could have a couple of weeks to look at it. So that's it for the town officials. Unless, no, okay. So, uh, first public forum? Nobody? Oh, we have an audience. Uh, correspondence, uh, let me just sign a couple of things here. We try and get through this as quickly as possible, it's getting more, it is. Okay, this is just a short, I'm not gonna read, uh, all these pages. Uh, but just a, on behalf of the Millville Council on Aging, I would like to extend our sincere gratitude to the individuals and orgas- organizations listed below for their efforts and donations of goods and services on June first, two thousand and thirteen, related to the summer cleanup project at the Millville Senior Center. As you might recall, we unknowingly chose to, chose a very hot day with temperatures in the eighties and nineties. The team came together at eight-thirty in the, in A.M. and finally finished the hard day's labor at two-thirty P.M. The individuals, or, the individuals and organizations are as follows, Kimball Sand Company, Millville Highway Department, Mrs. Claudette Barrett, Mrs. Denise Baker, Ms. Deborah Bodich, Mr. Roland Barrett, Mr. Ed Lager Junior, Mr. Fred Lager, Ed Lager the Third, Austin Caswell, Alex Malali, Jacob Ekman, and Joshua Cook. Although we still have a lot of work to do, we have done much work to clean up the ground surrounding the senior center. The donations of loom from Kimball Sand Company and the equipment and labor on the highway department was a, was a phenomenal support to us in the, in the efforts to further improve the curb appeal of the senior center. Thank you again to everyone for their generosity and hard work in support of the senior center, Patty Lager, Chairman, Millville C.O.A. And then she's got a few other letters. And there we go, reading off names. I thought of it as I was doing. So, uh, this one here, I haven't even read, I don't know how I missed it. Okay, anybody wanna read all this assessment? Chief, you're aware of Lake Street speeding complaint?
The board had asked me to, um, bring this matter to the chief's attention, and this is his response in writing. I know, uh, Mr. Law particularly had some serious concerns, um, so this is the chief's response.
Okay. Okay, so next, oop, I just buried my whole agenda. Um, appointments and resignations, we have none. Uh, we have an executive secretary report.
Oh, very little this evening. Um, the first thing is the board had asked me to schedule a meeting at the Chestnut Hill Community Center for a Saturday morning in September. Uh, we've been in touch with Diane Lamro, um, president of the, uh, community association. Um, all of the Saturdays in September were available, but the, um, in contacting the, uh, cable access committee, there was only one Saturday that we would have a camera operator available, and that would be the fourteenth. So if it's okay with the board, I can go ahead and schedule that for September fourteenth.
Okay.
What I thought we would call it is, you know, coffee with the selectmen and maybe from ten to twelve or from nine to eleven. Invite residents in to brainstorm or ask questions.
Yeah.
Give suggestions.
Yeah, sure, then. That's, that's pretty much what you were asking.
We, we might also invite, uh, the town planner.
Okay.
Because, uh, it, um, it was a planning board meeting, I believe. He was looking for more participation from the town or input from the town.
Yeah.
So that might be worthwhile to invite.
Yep.
Okay. Was there a particular time you'd like to schedule that for?
I think nine o'clock.
Really, the better, I think.
Yeah.
Nine to eleven?
Yeah. Nine to eleven is good.
Um, I do have an application for a toll day permit. This was submitted by, uh, Mr. Leonardis Jardins, the Grand Knight, on behalf of the Millville Knights of Columbus. He's requesting Saturday, September seventh, uh, with a rain date of the fourteenth, nine A.M. until one P.M. And this has been approved by the chief of police and fire and highway. And this is money to raise, uh, to raise money for kids with disabilities is the cause, the reason.
Everything's all good with you, so.
I made the motion that we, uh, accept the permit for the toll for, uh.
September seventh.
September seventh.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Excellent, okay. Um, for, first, old business, well, the only old business for tonight is fire station number two lease.
Yes.
Are you here to speak on that, Chief?
If you have questions.
Okay.
Um, I passed out to you earlier this evening, final, uh, what we're, we're hoping to be the final, but a proposed lease agreement. And I just called to your attention that, um, Mr. and Mrs. Frost have not seen this document as yet, uh, they've been on vacation.
Okay.
But because, uh, there is an urgency to get a lease signed, this is what we're proposing.
Okay.
Um, I can't guarantee you they're going to be agreeable to it.
Okay.
But because the board isn't meeting again until August, um, if the board is agreeable to it, I'd at least like to have the board, you know, approve and sign off on it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as had been mentioned in the past, because of an insurance issue, insurance coverage on the property, um, the Frosts were looking to increase, um, by about sixteen hundred, that was an estimate they had received. As it turns out, that's gonna be more like twenty-four hundred dollars is what the increase will be. And that's specifically the town paying for an insurance policy. Um, so we've, the language, what we've done with the lease agreement is we've included the payment of the insurance policy within the lease payment, within the first quarterly installment. And the town can't pay the insurance directly because obviously those invoices aren't made out to the town.
Okay.
So, um, that's why we have to go about it this way.
Alright.
Um, other than that, there've really been no other changes to the document.
Alright, I have one, one question of the lease is, of the, of the insurance part of the lease, is, is the town of Millville the only tenant of that structure?
I am not aware of that, um, my understanding from Chief Landry is he spoke to Mr. Frost, um, about the fairness, if you will, of the town paying one hundred percent of that insurance premium. And my understanding is there was no, no movement from him, there was, there was no, it was either we paid or we don't, so. There's no room for negotiation.
That is correct, I did speak to Mr. Frost about the toll.
And I truly understand business of renting property.
Yep.
But a reoccurring cost of approximately eight thousand dollars to rent a garage is foolish. We're paying twenty-four hundred dollars for insurance, we rent two bays out of five. So I thought we could negotiate a prorated system, and he said no, he wanted town to pay the entire amount of money. So currently, that's our only option, is to rent that particular garage. And my point of saying it's a garage, that's exactly what it is. It's not a fire station, it's a garage.
Yep.
It's people that believe up, up Chestnut Hill Road that it's a fully functioning fire department. It is not. It's an eight thousand dollar a year lease for to rent the garage. And I think in the future, we really have to look at alternatives to find a more prudent way to correct that situation, because long-term, if you multiply what we've paid over, say, fifteen years and now with the increases, we could've built a facility to house those two trucks. And that's what I'm gonna propose for the fall meeting, and that's what we're working on as we speak. Unless this town wants to continuously give away that kind of money every year.
Oh, really?
Uh, it's just absolutely foolish, I appreciate and thank Mr. Frost for allowing us to rent the two garages. And I understand business is business, but we're in the business also. And I find that cost of the garage a little bit above what we should be paying, but needless to say, we have to pay it at this point. But in the future, I would hope we would have some support to move away from that facility and have our own facility, which would be more prudent and certainly more productive to the town, because when they see the plans and the overall projected costs, it'll be a, a win to actually move from that facility uh, to a newer facility in the future.
Mm-hmm.
And that, you're gonna see that in the fall. So I, I certainly recommend that we do enter into agreement with Mr. Frost, because to be frank with everyone, I have nowhere else to place the trucks at this time.
Right.
They have to remain indoors, because you can't leave them out to the elements. Uh, the water tanker has water in it, obviously, and in the wintertime, if it's not indoors, it's gonna freeze, we have to empty the tank, so we have no water. And the engine, the same thing. So the bottom line is, we need the garage and hopefully, um, in the future, we can make arrangements to, to change that. But it's certainly a reoccurring cost, like I just mentioned, that we should work away from, uh, in the future.
Okay.
And, and go along with the, the lease, I asked the executive secretary to add a provision in there, if we do happen to get support for a new facility, that the rent will be prorated back to us if we, if we terminate our lease.
Right.
So we're meeting in six months, if we leave, I would hope that six months of premium would come back to us. We're not in the, the business of giving away money.
No.
So that's why, you know.
How far is it from one to the other?
One point, one point three miles.
Right.
This is a decision I'm gonna have with the September meeting.
Right.
And I appear before the board of selectmen. I've done my research, my analysis, and what we have in this town, maybe we needed it forty, fifty years ago, we don't need it today. We don't need two firehouses, I'll debate that with anybody, with the modern equipment we have, with the time response. And when you look at the analysis of what engine responds up at Chestnut Hill Road on a regular basis, it's engine two, which is on Main Street. It's never engine one.
Right.
Because most of the people respond to station one, not station two. So if you look at the analysis of responses, response times, we are realistically giving away money to have a new facility in town. The town is only four point nine square miles in length.
Right.
Most cities, you go to Douglas, some homes are twelve miles away from the nearest fire station.
Right.
So we've been spoiled in this town, because we've had one fire station, one rented garage, but it really serves no purpose in other renting a garage.
Right.
And I think one facility would serve the purpose and certainly cut down on expenses. It has a lot of other additional, uh, benefits, which I'll discuss in the future.
Right.
But I think that's the way we should look, um, unless we just wanna continue as it is. Uh, but that's a decision the board of selectmen can make, uh, in the near future. But I just think, um, times have changed, and we really should be looking outside the box, uh, rather than giving away money.
I agree.
So, along with the rent, we, we heat that building.
Right.
And we have electricity in that building to maintain the heating system, so at the end of the day, it's probably costing the town nine thousand dollars. For what? To rent the garage.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely doesn't make sense.
Right.
So hopefully, uh, in the fall, we'll see a proposal to, to change that.
Okay.
Look forward to it.
Alright, just sit up here. Any more, any more questions on the lease? Sounds like we gotta do it for now.
Mrs. Alden's are legal?
I'd only like to go back to one thing, though, I'd like to thank the chief for, uh, making a stand on Grove Street and Lake Street, just so you know, it's still an issue.
Right.
Um, I appreciate not putting up signs, cause I don't think that's gonna do anything personally, but we still have an issue up there, and residents are still not happy.
If I can comment on that particular, uh, issue, any complaint regarding speeding, we take seriously. We have spent a lot of time on Lake Street and Grove Street, like we do any other city, uh, town street, we spend a lot of time throughout the day, patrolling and, and conducted radar posts. Lake Street is typical of any, any other street in town, to be honest with you. Uh, the average traffic count is twenty-two cars in the afternoon, seventeen cars in the morning. The average speed is twenty-two miles an hour. You're always gonna have that person that's gonna go above twenty-two miles an hour. And those are the type of people we like to catch. Uh, we've stopped, I think I gave you the statistics on what we stopped, I think we gave five violations and stopped, uh, some multiple cars at the same time. So we're gonna be there as often as we can, like we are any other street in town. Uh, and I think, you know, looking at other alternatives, installing signs, doesn't work. You could look at a national survey, national trends, signs, they're just redundant, people get accustomed to them and they forget it almost looks like looking at a tree when you're driving down the street. Speed bumps, uh, there was mention of speed bumps, unfortunately, that's not the typical area you would see a speed bump, cause it's too, too secluded, too suburban actually to have a speed bump on that street, but if you did consider it, the cost to install that speed bump would be, would be great. Because there are requirements of the size, it can't be like a narrow speed bump, it's quite wide. I've had experience in the past installing them or being in charge of the installation of those, and it probably, uh, probably seven to ten, ten thousand dollar, uh, cause you gotta light them, you gotta put the appropriate signs up, and you gotta construct it, and you gotta maintain it. So that's something I don't think we should be looking at, uh, if there was thought about that. I think aggressive patrol is a way to solve the problem, but I'll be frank, you can't stop everybody.
No, but something's better than nothing.
Something's better, and we.
And you did have an impact.
And we try to spend as much time throughout the community in trying to stop that, but at the end of the day, regardless of where you live. Yeah, I don't, it's not only Millville, it's from here to the west coast, people speak. And we try to curb that problem by, by stopping as many cars as we, we do. Um, we don't issue violations to everyone that we do stop, you know, we use discretion, we issue a lot of warnings. So that's why, if you look at my, my stats, out of maybe fifty cars that may have been stopped, we're probably issuing thirty, thirty percent receive a violation. But we don't, you know, we use a lot of discretion in this town, we give a lot of warnings out, and hopefully that curbs the problem.
Right.
Repeat offenders, they get violations, but most of the time, you know, we, uh, we use discretion as well.
I just wanna thank you.
No, thank you, John.
Appreciate it.
So back to the lease. I guess we gotta vote on the insurance, which we have no choice, really. Unless we want a truck to freeze or do something.
The, the change.
The, the changes in the cost, has anything else in this agreement been changed since the last one?
Um, as the chief mentioned, we added the language, the paragraph just above section eighteen, which speaks to, um, if the town exercises its right for early withdrawal or termination of the lease, we would have a prorated share of the premium back. Um, and in section six, which speaks to insurance coverage, uh, we're sure we added information in there, our language in there that, um, uh, that the lessor, which would be the Frosts, maintain, uh, the proper insurance on the facility. Um, other than that, other than the dates and the amounts, nothing else has changed.
Motion signed, the lease as written. No discussion? All in favor? And then, um, new business. We have a response from Harold Gou, the, uh, BMR district, uh, attorney on the M A, uh, MES roof for the MSBA phase one. So, uh, we, so we, we asked, uh, we had a few questions to the, to the school, right, on this whole?
Well, if you recall, the, the town had, um, the board of selectmen voted to authorize
Right.
um, an engineering evaluation of the building after the, the heavy snowstorms several years ago. And we learned from those evaluations that, um, there were some issues with the roof, and we needed a new roof. So the school committee is working with the Massachusetts, um, building, school building authority to obtain grant monies to assist with, um, putting a roof on the Millville Elementary School. Um, however, in doing so, as we've discussed many times, in order to get that grant, they need a feasibility study.
Yep.
The committee, uh, school committee does not have funding to, um, pay for this feasibility study. So they are looking to the town to front the money, if you will, for phase one of the feasibility study, which is thirty-five thousand dollars. In the MSBA reimbursement monies that we got back, um, in two thousand and ten, I believe, and town meeting has voted to, um, allocate to structural, we have a balance of thirty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. So, um, the board of selectmen is absolutely authorized to, um, send thirty-five thousand of this to the school committee so they can begin initiating the process of the grant paperwork.
I, I got a question on that. The school committee's saying that they don't have the money to fund that?
Yes, because what...
What about this little tiny, uh, cash bank that they got over there with a couple hundred thousand there? Why don't they use some of that?
Right, well, that's their excess and deficiency, what would be our free cash.
Well, good, let them use their free cash.
It's not certified until October. So once town meeting passes, you can't touch that until it's certified. Um, and the deadline for this is August fifth, otherwise they'll miss.
Why, why is the estimate for this research, thirty-five thousand? We just happen to have thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was a complete coincidence.
All right.
No, it is.
It is coincidence.
I was at a meeting of theirs, can't remember if it was this project per se. But at the time, I was there for another reason. Um, they talked about this, and they, or something similar. But they were going, they didn't want to come and ask the town for the money because they knew we were in trouble. So they were going to front that. I thought it was for the roof project. And then in turn, fold it into that final project, and then they would get reimbursed from us when we received that. So has something changed?
Right, the deadline is August fifth. And from town meet, once town meeting closes and their budget's been accepted and approved by the towns, they can't touch their E and D until it's certified.
But I thought they had planned this and put it aside.
If I'm not mistaken, I, I, I remember Jennifer saying it, because I had a conversation with Jennifer all this. So my question to you is if we did vote, give them the money, we're going to want it back.
Right, we'll get, well, we'll get fifty-seven percent back. We're going to be paying for it either way, whether it's now or whether it's through a B and eventually.
But their initial conversation was they were going to fold that into their...
Yeah.
And then get it back from us later.
I'm not sure.
Because we didn't have the money.
Maybe their attorney wasn't there and they weren't aware that legally they couldn't do that? I, I don't know.
Or they just don't want to now.
Oh, it's kind of inconvenient, so why?
That's not what I was told. I was told by the attorney that legally they cannot.
Because there's not a meeting, I don't see Mr. Gould that.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Because I, Mr. LaRue, that was the first question I asked. As, as I chuckled, what do you mean, you don't have the money? And that was the response I got.
Exactly.
And if the town does not come up with the thirty-five thousand, we'll miss the deadline, the August fifth deadline for this round, because they would have to, um, they would have to get a loan and the paperwork wouldn't be done in time.
I, I realize, I mean, it is, it is our bill, and we are going to have to pay it, whether we pay it today or we pay it next, you know, six months. But I just, I find it that we've been working on this roof project for quite some time. And that now, but once again, and this drives me nuts, is like, oh, we need a signature today. Really? Because you've known about this for how long? And I always feel like we're, we're put up, uh, backs up against the wall. And I personally like to say, table everything so we can get all the information. But when we're at this point, it's, it makes it very difficult.
Yep.
And I'd be more than happy to express my concern to that committee, um, that, you know, that these last minute deadlines.
This is not the first time.
No, and it happens.
They do this all the time.
It happens constantly.
I came in at quarter past five and she, Helen was just spitting them out of her throat.
I think personally, the town should push back.
I know.
It's dated today, our, our, you know, our pants, everything's put together Thursday, Friday. So, and then this comes in, and it's like, you've got to do it or you're going to lose it. And, and this isn't the first time.
Yeah, but that conversation that you had, that I remember you having, was quite a long time ago.
I think we were there for football. That is, like, I feel like that's how long ago it was.
And they still didn't do anything, they dragged their feet. Now all of a sudden their backs have benched the wall and they're asking us to give the money again.
Mm-hmm. I mean, like I said, it's our bill and we are going to have to pay it.
And it's not, and, and it's not Mr. Gould's fault either for not having us ready in time. Because the school committee voted on it four days ago to not fund it. Well, it would have been nice if, I'm sure they knew two weeks, three weeks ago that they couldn't fund it.
Yeah, just to give us the heads up.
Okay, well, anyway, with that said, we're going to just beat a dead horse here, but, so...
On page three is the specific vote, uh, that the board must make.
Oh, yeah, I'll read it.
Hmm?
I'll read it.
Oh, thanks.
Um, I move that the town transmit and deliver to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars from the grant payment in the amount of six hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight, which the town received from the Massachusetts School Building Authority in December of two thousand and ten for the Millville Elementary School. Said sum to be used and extended by the Blackstone Millville Regional School District to fund and pay for the feasibility study slash semantics design phase for the re, replacement of the roof and its, help me there.
Pertinent.
Pertinent components at the Millville Elementary School under the accelerated repair program of the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Last a second. Uh, any more discussion on that? All in favor?
So this, uh, wipes out that total reimbursement?
No, we have two hundred and dollars left.
Yep. Two hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Well, two sixty-one, which is allocated to structural, um, the balance for water is sixty-one to forty-six. And the balance left in the oil tank is twenty-eight hundred, fifty-five. Um, but I think at the next town meeting, we'll be looking to move that.
Um, also, I would like to make a motion to ask Helen, um, to write a letter to the the, uh, district up there. Because this wasn't our regular scheduled meeting. Technically, we were last week. Now, you know, I don't know how that phases into their vote and their meeting schedule. But we wouldn't have gotten this till next week, which that would have put us, really. Um, but if we could have Helen write an email, Helen write an email to them stating that we want to be informed, even if it's not a formal letter or numbers of issues that we are going to have to tackle so that we can be, um, informed and we can research and we can ask pertinent questions.
Absolutely.
Yep, I agree.
So that's a motion.
That is.
All right, second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any more on that school? Okay, so final public forum?
I just have a couple of things.
Just a couple?
All good news.
Okay.
Homeland Security, they offered a, a grant, but it wasn't a grant where we had to write it. It was an entitlement, simply sign it down the line. They had the opportunity to pick specific equipment that we could have.
Okay.
So I just wanted to tell everyone what we do have. Um, a brand new generator, it's like a seven horse generator. I've assigned that to the fire department. More importantly, inside my garage, a portable moving light tower, which goes up about twenty-five feet in the air, which is towable, which is also a large generator.
Mm-hmm.
And we're going to use it for the first time, uh, the last week of July, I think, the Cub Scouts.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, we're going to have a movie in park night. And we're going to go up there and light, like, the entire field up.
Okay.
Uh, using this new generator slash lighting tower. So it's pretty neat, if you want to see it, it's in the, uh, police department.
You're going to see the movie if it's lighted up?
We'll turn the lights off.
For beforehand?
Yeah, but when they leave the movie, though, so they can see where they're going, we'll have it on, so it's a great, and we didn't do anything for it, can't take credit for it. The government was giving it away, so we simply applied for it. We did receive some first aid kits, I gave a couple to Helen. I have some in the station, uh, for Gary, the animal patrol officer, I gave him a couple of cages. Um, him, a couple of tops, a whole bunch of stuff. And I distributed them to whoever really needed them in town. So if you want to take a look at the new lighting tower, which is a great asset, it's worth probably around ten thousand dollars. And the generator was first class, uh, electric start generator. We really didn't need one. So I, like I said, I gave that to the fire department, uh, but it can be used by any department if they need it.
Right.
Um, and we also issued the first vending ice cream permit, um, last week. Um, she, Mrs., um...
Scherz.
Scherz came in.
Yes, I know.
Yes.
They come by every Sunday night.
She came in.
They ring the bell really loud.
She's the first one. Um, we follow the core, we follow the requirements, and the new fee structure. Is, I guess that was left up to me. Um, someone had to decide what it was. It's fifty dollars for a resident, it's one hundred dollars for a non-resident. And we just didn't pick that number from the air. We called other municipalities and found out what they were charging. Some charged less, some charged more. So we went with the medium and we charged fifteen hundred bucks. So she's the only one, so...
Yeah, she is the only one.
She's legal, so she has a permit, and that's about it for that.
So if we see another one?
Call me.
Call you?
Because, uh, yeah, I don't anticipate seeing anymore. She's the only one.
All right.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Excellent. So, well, so our next meeting will be August fifth, uh, seven PM at the Longfellow Municipal Center. And with that, looking for a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.